Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone to a public hearing here at Row Town Hall in relation to Local Law 3 of 2020. And it is an amendment to Chapter 149 zoning of the Code of the Town of Monroe. And at this time, I acknowledge that we have a quorum present. And I would ask the town clerk to read the public notice regarding the proposed local law.
Yes, and August 1st, 2020, the State and Town of Monroe versus the Public Hearing should consider adoption of Local Law. Notice is hereby given pursuant to Section 20, the municipal law of State and Town Hall for the Public Hearing will be held by the Town Board of the Town of Monroe on August 11th, 2020 at 6:30 p.m. at the Town Council House located at 351 Renault Road, Monroe, New York, for the purpose of considering the adoption of Local Law Number 3 of 2020. If adopted, Local Law Number 3 of 2020 would amend Chapter 149 zoning and the vote in use schedules to limit multifamily dwellings to the UR zone and limit two-family dwellings to the R2 in UR zones. Due to public health and safety concerns, public will not be permitted to attend at the remoderation work orders or department headers staff will be situated or any other location. The husband will be able to fully observe the video conference meeting and will be able to comment during the public hearing. Please take further notice of the materials for the public hearing here on the link to the Zoom site or the town website www.townofmoor.org. Written comments on Local Law Number 3 of 2020 can be submitted to the town clerk up until the time of the public hearing. The proposed Local Law Number 3 of 2020 can be obtained at the Row Town Council House and on the town website.
Thank you very much, Leanne. And regarding the meeting being closed to the public, this is provided for as a result of an extension by the Governor of New York for virtual meetings to continue to be held through September 4th of 2020. So with that, I'm just going to ask counsel to give a brief synopsis of what this proposed local law will do, what the changes are from current zoning, and then we will open the public hearing up to the public.
Okay. The local law removes multifamily and two-family housing from every zoning district except the UR district, which currently is the only district in which multifamily or multiple family housing is allowed, and the R1 district, or R2 district. So R2 and UR allow two families. UR allows two families and multifamily, and the rest of them do not. And the law itself is just a cleanup and consistency of titles for sections and the voting use requirement, same thing. It's just removing them from all the districts except those two districts.
Good, great, thank you. And so at this time, we will operate just like we always do public hearings. If members of the public are here in person through resolution at the organizational meeting when we hold public hearings, each individual will have an opportunity to speak for initial five-minute period until everyone has had an opportunity to speak at least once. And then we will continue to allow everyone to have additional commentary time until everyone has had an opportunity for their comments to be made and recorded on the record. For those who would like to call in for comment, the telephone number is (518) 792-1802, and the extension is (222), which will get you to the Town Board Meeting Room. And I will put you on speaker. And I'll ask Deputy Supervisor Noonan to just track the time for that additional five-minute period. And you can also submit written questions through the Zoom access portal. And so with that, we're opening the meeting up to the public. We also have another extension that the public can also use to reach the Town Board Meeting Room. And that number would be (518) 792-1030, put the same extension (222). So you have two options to reach the Town Board Meeting Room. Pretend that we open the public hearing at 6:30. Or close at 6:30. Well, we'll go to 6:45 and allow the public some additional time. And then the board will have the opportunity to either leave the public hearing open or to close it. One of the things that we have to do after the public hearing is the request of the zoning change has to be submitted to Sarasota County Planning Board for review, so that will be part of the process.
Sorry, it's been suspended.
Sorry, it's been suspended, okay.
And the Sarasota County Planning, I was sleeping with Mike Valentine about it, and they are looking at it, and they're reading, just next to it.
Yeah, so if anybody's wondering, we're not going to be taking action on this local law this evening in the regular Town Board meetings, so some others that actually have to take in, so I'll make you all aware of that. We had any written requests?
We have no responses.
Has a clerk received any? Okay. So let the record reflect that the town has not received any correspondence in relation to the public hearing at this point in time on proposed Local Law Number 3 for 2020. So we have about three more minutes before 6:45. And if we have nobody contacting the town, we will end the public hearing this evening. So I guess that would be the three-minute warning. So I know as we're waiting for public comment, I'll just offer to the board members that as the process moves forward, we'll be doing a secret short form AF Part 1, which will be signed by the supervisor. And Parts 2 and 3, we will go through the questions one by one. That'll have to also be signed by the supervisor after resolution. Then the next step in the process would be a resolution adopting Local Law 3 of 2020, notice of adoption, and then the Sarasota County Planning Board reaffirm. So I anticipate that this will be on the agenda for August 25th if the board so chooses. And at 6:45, at this time, I'd like to record to reflect that we had no public input from any member of the public for the public hearing. We didn't receive any written correspondence for the record. And if the board would like to, we can close the public hearing now or leave it open. My recommendation would be to close the public hearing.
Let's close the public hearing. Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. So the public hearing is closed. So we will return here to the regular Town Board meeting at 7:00 p.m.
Welcome everyone to a regular town board meeting for the Town of Monroe for August 11, 2020, and call for a roll call.
Councilmember Wogan here.
Councilmember Doobin?
Here.
Councilmember Danning?
Here.
Circumless Cruz.
Here. And ask that everyone please rise for the collective legions. The collective legions signify the United States of America and to the Republic of America with its stance on the nation under God, in the principle of liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. And before we begin, I just want to point out that we continue to hold virtual meetings here at Town of Monroe as a result of an extension that the governor has done through executive order, which is in effect through September 4th. So the public has access via the information on their agenda, which is on our website, townofmoore.org, for being able to view the savings town board meeting. First item on the agenda is approval of minutes. And we have two sets. We have July 14, 2020, which was a regular town board meeting, and we also have a July 28, 2020 meeting, which is an audit meeting. And we'll take them up separately. So I'd be looking for a motion to approve the minutes of July 14. So move second. Any comments, corrections on those meetings? Discussion if not all in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Second set of minutes is for the audit meeting for July 28, 2020. Would somebody like to move their adoption?
So move second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously adopting the minutes. And for the record, I'd like to note that I'm abstaining from those minutes as I was unable to attend that meeting on the 28th. So thank you for that. The next item I have is set future meetings and workshops. We, I don't have any required at this time. I don't know if the board members have any requests. I'll be updating the board a little bit further down. I did meet with our insurance people, but we get a lot of time out there. We'll probably have an insurance meeting as we get closer to the deadline or determining what plans we're going to go with.
That's health insurance?
Yes.
Health insurance.
Okay. Just a brief update for COVID-19. I received notification today from Saratoga County about a potential low-risk COVID-19 exposure to Town Wilton. Says that Saratoga County Public Health Department and its team of contact tracers have determined that there was a low-risk COVID-19 exposure at the Burger King in Wilton. Apparently, an employee tested positive for COVID-19 and worked on Friday, July 24th, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Wednesday, July 29th, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And Thursday, July 30th, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And finally, Friday, July 31st, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. The notice indicates says that while the employee was tested positive, that employee was wearing a mask at all times. Anyone who visited this location on this day should self-monitor for signs and symptoms of COVID-19 and contact their healthcare provider to get a diagnostic test. Additionally, anyone can get diagnostic tests at the sites that are listed on the county's website. And then I also have today's numbers for the COVID update regarding cases to date since the pandemic outbreak. Saratoga County, there have been 800 cases, confirmed cases of COVID-19, and there have been 17 deaths. The number of recovered cases is 729. There's currently 54 active cases, and there are three individuals that are hospitalized. To date, 52,679 individuals have been tested. Item four on the evening's agenda is a speed limit reduction request. I had a conversation a couple of weeks ago with the manager from Monroe Lake State Park regarding a complaint that I had received from a town resident who lives on Old Saratoga Road. And after talking with Brian at the state park, he's familiar with the individual. They've had many conversations about the traffic issue. And in a nutshell, the issue is when the park really becomes crowded. They don't allow people in until people leave. And what can happen is there can be a backup on the highway, which cannot be seen because of the rise in the highway before you reach the entrance to the state park. And so it obviously creates a hazardous situation. Brian did say when that happens, they do allow people to get off to highway by entering the park for safety reasons, but they still have to wait within the gates. But sometimes it doesn't happen fast enough. There is signage down there that indicates that there is potential for traffic situation there at the entrance to Monroe State Park. But the bottom line is that he would, Brian, would very much like to see a speed limit reduction. I believe it's 45 miles per hour, and he would like to see it reduced to 30. I know the town in the past has requested a reduction from the state with no success, but I said I would bring it to the town board and ask that they make a formal request again. And Brian did indicate that as part of that application for a request for a reduction that on behalf of the state park, he would be happy to write a letter of support. So if the board would like to authorize a clerk to make their request, we will move forward.
Sure. Let's make that a motion.
Yeah, we need a motion.
I can make a motion to authorize, but to request the reduction of speed limit on Old Saratoga Road in front of Monroe Lake State Park.
Second.
From 45 to 30.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Okay.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And Leanne, I'll reach out to Brian to get him to secure that letter so that it can go along with the request. Item five on this evening's agenda is a resolution regarding records retention and disposition. I believe, I know a clerk may be able to provide additional information, but I believe as a result of an act of the state legislature, municipalities are required to follow a certain schedule, which requires the adoption of a resolution. And so if the clerk has it, I'll ask her to read the resolution.
Resolved by the town board of the Town of Monroe, the retention and disposition schedules for New York local government records, LGS1, issued pursuant to Article 57A of the Arts and Cultural Affairs Law, containing legal minimum retention periods for local government records hereby adopted for use by aldermen officers legally disposing of the value of these records listed therein. For the resolved, when the order to Article 57A, only those records will be disposed of that are described in the retention disposition schedule for New York local government records after they have met the minimum retention period described therein, being only those records will be disposed of that do not have sufficient administrative, fiscal, legal, or historical value in their retention beyond established legal minimum periods.
Thank you very much, Leanne. Would somebody like to move their resolution?
I don't know that often.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
If we have a reading here, it's just that the schedule that New York has put out there and that, I guess the purpose for that is essentially having it on our books that were filed there.
We have it. Each municipality will adopt the schedule.
We will adopt it. So it's just a formal adoption of something that's there. Okay.
Any other discussion? If not, all in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next item this evening is an issue that we have addressed recently, but we're, our employees are looking for continued clarification. And it's in relation to item six on the agenda, which I have listed as transfer station. We have, the town board had modified the schedule and attempted to clarify at the request of supervisor for the transfer station regarding yard waste, brush, composting, leaves, grass clothing, things like that, fallen limbs. And when we modified the schedule sheet to highlight the requirements for yard waste, what the fees would be, or whether it's free of charge, we had listed passenger vehicles, pickup trucks, and small utility trailers as not being charged for using the service. It was brought to my attention that with some staff down there, there continues to be a little confusion on what is a small utility trailer. And then a resident actually came into my office very unhappy with the lack of clarity in his interaction with our staff down there. So regardless, I said I'd bring it to the town board. We would look at it. If the board wants to clarify it further, we'll do so, and we would do it at this meeting. So the question I have for the board is, do we want to clarify for ease of implementation of the fee schedule by transfer station employees, what constitutes a small utility trailer, which is currently without charge?
So I'm open to discussion on that, recommendations. So discussion, just reading this, you know, the first thought, you know, to actually define what a utility trailer and the size of it. What, the question that just popped into my head was, is somebody going to be able to argue that a dump truck is a utility trailer? And my thought to that was, let's put, let's change the wording of state body trucks, dump trucks, and dump trailers have a $30 per yard fee. Passenger vehicles, pickup trucks, small utility trucks not exceeding 6 by 12 are no charge. Is that my statement? And is that acceptable?
Well, it certainly clarifies the ambiguity that is on my current fee schedule. I don't have a problem with that.
Okay.
I don't have a problem with it. I'm just wondering if there's some, I agree with the dump trailer part because I brought that as well. It's a regular one that has a small dump trailer than what you don't want to see out there. And then.
Form A is the smallest that's seen. I think it's in the same way, dump trailer.
And I can see the value of owning that to, you know, to handle, unload, right?
Sure.
Do we open the size of the dump trailer for the no charge? Because if you're owning the dump trailer.
Not even the dump trailer is in for no charge.
Okay. I'm going to be with it.
The dump trailer, state body trucks, dump trucks, and dump trailers are $30 per load.
I'm okay with that.
And then to have for passenger vehicles, pickup trucks, and small utility trailers not exceeding 6 by 12, if you don't charge. Actually, it's all, that's all town rules. We're not accepting anything about that.
Yeah, no, this is all for, we only accept the brush from our town.
Then I would move to change the wording of this to that of defining a small utility trailer is not exceeding 6 by 12 feet, and then adding in more state body trucks, dump trucks, and dump trailers, $30 per load. And if somebody has the opportunity when they have a dump trailer and they, why they have this dump, they can do it for your charge by bringing it around for their own charge.
Well, I think, you know, it's a good point because dump trailers will have a bit of pan. Anyway, it's not that you can put it over to a super wide pack or something, or whatever you're reporting with a truck.
You're doing.
So.
Yeah, utility trailers, 6 by 12, is the, the larger one. What happened is somebody got a report, they're going to charge $30, then charge them as if it was a large trip, you know.
Yeah.
It's to be crystal clear. It can be easy to start with.
State body trucks, state body dump truck, dump trucks, dump trailers, and utility trailers larger than 6 by 12.
Okay.
That's what we're going to have to do.
Just to be crystal clear, because somebody.
Yeah, that's right.
So also if we had, if we did that there, do we really need to find it in the no charge area?
We should.
Okay.
That way it's clear if the folks taking the money and the window.
And anybody else have any questions? Okay.
So, all right. So effective date, you want to do two separate days from like the 22nd, and we'll start handling now notices to everybody starting tomorrow.
Close time.
Or 20th, 20th, Thursday.
On Thursday, oh, it'll get lazy type of stuff.
Two of them. So they'll have, they'll have almost two weeks for it. Or do you want to do September 1st?
Oh, wow. Two weeks is fine.
So effective Saturday, August 22. All right. So with that, that'll take a motion to do that.
So.
All right. Do you have it? Do you want me to read it? Do you have it?
I have most of it right now. I'm trying to scribble because it went back and forth because we have it one way and then out of it.
So for clarity, and I'll make sure that this is what you have and this is what the board wants, I'd be looking for a resolution stating that the Town of Monroe Transfer Station Fee Schedule page regarding yard waste is amended to read as follows, that passenger vehicles, pickup trucks, and small utility trailers, no larger than 6 by 12, shall not be charged, and that state body trucks, dump trucks, and dump trailers, as well as utility trailers, that exceed 6 by 12 will be a $30 per load charge.
So second.
To be, I'm sorry, to be effective, August 22.
Yes.
Got that?
Maybe seven, I'm sorry.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That'll make Ted's and some others. Oh, unrelated to that issue, but related to transfer stations. Ted brought to my attention that we have not, I don't think we've ever changed the sticker that people receive as a resident to use the transfer station. He's aware of some instances where somebody who has moved out of town still has the original sticker, and they're coming and putting brush in there for free. So I think that we need to add a rotation there of the transfer station ones to work that have the sticker.
We thought about it, just to do one of, what, every two years or?
Whether you guys.
Does that take a year or would it be too expensive or?
Yeah. I mean, probably three, four, three or four years. But the fact that it's never been updated, we polished it up.
Okay.
So if you guys want to come up with a nice design.
I don't think we could use the same design, just put different colors.
You know, if you put the year on it.
Yeah.
And then you know that they're good for 20 years.
Sure. So they're free of charge, it's just.
I'm curious.
They have a $1, $1.
So I'm curious if you noticed individuals in the town anymore, can you say, can we have any answer, well, that is required by law arguments. Yeah, I don't care anymore.
Best of your registration vehicle.
Or, yeah, I mean, I know it's hard for you to even enforce her.
I guess I think that it is a job for employees to check it easier.
No, I agree with that. I was saying, there's one particular scenario that seems, like, just happens to me, I don't bring it to hand, you know, live in town anymore.
Yeah. I think we try this instead of, I don't have to have a date, 2020, 2025, you know, do it a couple of years.
Okay.
Oh, I got that one.
I'm sure, and I'm sure the transfer staging committee will come up with a very well-organized update to our verification system.
Okay.
All right. Transfer station, recreation department. So we, this is an issue that we've addressed in the past regarding, it's under cemeteries. As the board recalls, we worked with a property owner that has property that borders one of the town's cemeteries, Route 9, and the fence that the town owns was in bad, bad need of, in need of repair. It's actually falling down. The town took the fence down, and the property owner next door very much wanted the fence to be replaced. So if you recall, I think Pete reached out at my request to the property owner and said if he'd be willing to split the cost, we would, you know, put the fence back up. So then COVID-19 hit. So then COVID-19 hit, and we had a price that the town board had approved on February 11th, where materials would be 1,246,035 cents, we authorized direct leader to go to Lowe's to make the purchase, and unfortunately, because a lot of folks are doing the home repairs, because they have the time to do it now, while they're, have more time at home, there is no availability for treated wooden stockade fence panels. And so, we'd have a recommendation from Pete, and he would like to move forward with installation of a new fence, but he would like to stain the fence, and with stain and polyurethane, and that will, that coupled with the fact that the purchase wasn't made has increased the price that was approved by the town board on February 11th by $207.11. So I asked him to go out and get three more prices. You should have that sheet before you on August 7th, the, this would be for 25 sections of a six foot by eight foot, natural untreated wooden stockade fence panels, 26 four by four posts and screws to replace the old Chris Boss Cemetery fence on Route 9. He has a price from Home Depot, $1,568.45. He has a price from Lowe's, $1,453.46, and a price from Curtis Lumber for $1,636,068. So his recommendation is to go with Lowe's again, which is, as I indicated, additional $207.11, so I would need a resolution authorizing the purchase to be increased to $1,453.46. This would be paid from account A8110.4, which has a balance of $1,285.10, but we did receive half of the cost from the property owner next door. So where do we have to do a transfer? Joe?
We will, we will increase revenues and expenditures at the auto meeting.
All right, so, but I can't authorize that until the money's there. All right, so we're going to table that until the auto meeting?
Okay.
And we'll handle it then when we have sufficient funds from the donation that was made by the property owner, so it's properly accounted for. All right, put it on hold. Also, under rec, we have an email, I'm not sure if the board members received it or not, from our rec leader, saying that we had received a grant from DIX in the amount Actually, it's a $200 gift card, and they are donating 120 flat disc cones on top of that for direct use, so it's actually a total value of $349.90. When Pete wrote the grant request, he had done so in December, and he had asked for a donation of footballs, cones, jolly ladders, and some other miscellaneous items. And so what DIX has agreed to, as I indicated, is the 120 flat disc cones, as well as a $200 gift card, which can be used in any of the stores, purchase footballs, or any other needed equipment. So just wanted to make the board aware of that.
Sorry to interrupt, and then Mr. Chesky just texted me, he is concerned that if we wait, the material doesn't be available, then we'll be in a situation that we're, and again, I don't understand, does it, does it have to wait this point for...
So, to be clear, it is inappropriate to authorize an expenditure of funds from a particular account when the money is not there.
Okay, so...
So I'm fast surprised that a request was made to spend more money than was in the account.
So he did say the money was received, but it's in the, it's in the incorrect accounts.
Does he know what account he wants to take that out of?
We can, we could do a transfer, it is currently in A500, which is an account used to hold money until it's ready to use. It can be transferred there. I can go pull the exact number if you'd like to.
So, so then, if the board would like to offer the following resolution, it would be to increase, to utilize Lowe's and increase the amount previously approved for the purchase of the aforementioned fence work at a price of $1,453,046, which shall come from accounts A8810.4, which has a current balance as of August 31st of $1,285,10, with the remainder of the balance coming from account A500. So, second. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? And next item on the agenda number eight is clerk request. We have a request to purchase a Fellows Power Shred 125 CI 20 sheet crosscut commercial shredder. And the clerk has obtained three quotes, first one's from WB Mason, the amount of $729.99, next one is from Staples Online for $778.99, and the third quote is from Fellows Direct, in the amount of $979. If the board recalls, this is something that we had budgeted for, for the 2020 budget, and we had budgeted $800 for that, and that money remains in account A699.1, which is the records management account, and her recommendation is to go with WB Mason, in the amount of $729.99. So, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I think I've got everything under town clerk right between the records manager and also... Item nine on this evening's agenda, I have listed as resignations. I regret to inform the public that we have, since our last board meeting, we received two resignations. The first one is from the chair of our planning board, Mr. Ron Zimmerman, and I'll read the resignation letter. It says, Dear Todd, this letter serves as my resignation from the planning board. Tonight will serve as my, this was received in my office July 21st. Tonight will serve as my last meeting. Thank you for allowing me to serve the people of the Town of Morrow. This opportunity has exposed me to numerous challenges, as well as the chance to continually develop my engineering skills. I've enjoyed watching the Town of Morrow grow and prosper under your leadership, as well as the town board. Please pass along my gratitude to Kathy Perez and the extended team at Town Hall. Feel free to call upon me if I can be of further assistance in the future. I just, I just want to thank Ron for 18 years, you know, he served our community on the planning board, and the last four as chairman of the planning board. He, with his background and experience, has served our residents very well. He's seen a lot of changes in the town, positive changes, and was actively involved with them. So on behalf of the residents, the town board residents, I want to thank Ron for his service, and I would ask the town board for a resolution to accept his resignation. So, second. All in favor? Any opposed? It is adopted. And also, under resignations, I received, hand-delivered today, and it was also with great regret, a resolution from council member, I'm sorry, a resignation letter from council member Gina LeClaire, and I will read that for the board and the public. She writes, Dear Supervisor Kuzneers and fellow town board members, as I have learned during nearly 13 years serving as a member of the Morrow Town Board, making decisions on behalf of our residents involves anticipating the future without knowing what that may bring. The same is true when, when you apply it to your family. This year, unforeseen changes which impact my family will grow, will now significantly impact my ability to continue to serve our community as a council member on the Morrow Town Board. As a result, after a long and careful period of reflection, I have made a very difficult decision to step down as a member of the town board. My resignation will be effective August 10th, 2020. I want to take this opportunity to thank the residents of our town for allowing me to represent them for four years, and for four terms on the board. It has been such a fun and rewarding experience to do so, and I very much appreciate the confidence that they have had in me. I also truly enjoyed working with our town employees. Their dedication to our community is immeasurably strong. It has also been an honor and a privilege to serve the supervisor Kuzneers. His dedicated work ethic, willingness, and ability to tackle difficult issues while making the right decisions will position the town for a bright future. Together with Deputy Supervisor Noonan and the rest of the town board, Morrow will be an even greater place to live and raise a family. With sincere and grateful thanks, Gina LeClaire, Town Council. So, again, another individual that has served our community for a very long time. She was in her fourth term. I was a council member when she was first elected, and she has made a huge impact in some key areas during her tenure on the board. When she came on, she was very interested in recreation and the rec park, she was instrumental in getting community gardens in place, in early days of her term, and that was very successful at the time. She played an integral part in our trails program, was involved in the Big Boone Trail project, very much wanted to expand recreational opportunities for our residents, as well as those from outside the area. And she also was a huge supporter, and played an intricate role in getting sewer approved along the Route 9 corridor. So it'll be a huge loss for the town, but I know, you know, in the next phase of her life, she will be doing something that is very much important to her and her family, and, you know, she's looking forward to taking on those challenges as time marches on. So, again, on behalf of the Morrow Town Board and the residents of the Town of Morrow, I'd like to thank former council member Gina LeClaire for all that she has contributed to our residents, so...
She's probably watching this right now.
Oh, I doubt it. So job well done for Gina, and she was a true partner with me in many of the important projects that we took on, so we will miss her greatly. So with that, I'll have to ask for a resolution to accept her resignation. Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Thanks, Gina.
In favor?
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? And for the record, I'm regretfully voting yes. All right, so with the resignation come vacancies, and so we have, we have one vacancy now on the planning board as a result of Ron Zimmerman resigning. As the board is aware, we have two alternates on the planning board, and we have an individual, Meredith Smith Mathias, who we appointed as an alternate back in January of 2019. She has, so she's served for over a year and a half now, has an alternate, and, and it was an excellent addition on the part of this board to the planning board. She's currently a project manager with Environmental Design and Research, is that her name?
There is an update to that.
Oh, there is, okay.
Yeah, I thought she recently joined National Grid.
Oh, that's right, okay, so she's currently with National Grid. At the time of her appointment, she took an alternate position, she was a project manager, manager for environmental design in Glenmont. She was also a project manager from 2012 through 2017 with Pyramid Network Services. Prior to that, she worked in site acquisition and zoning, as a zoning specialist from 2007 through 2011, and she also worked for about five years, five or six years, as a planner with the LA, so she has incredible amount of hands-on, real-world experience, which I think would serve the planning board well, especially as we're moving into a phase in Town of Morrow where there will be a lot of important projects coming before the planning board that relate to our commercial corridor. She has a Bachelor of Arts from Fordham University, as well as a Master's in Regional Planning from the State University of New York at Albany. She has also a plethora of professional certifications and memberships, I'm not going to read through them all, so my recommendation would be to appoint Meredith to the unexpired term of Ron Zimmerman on the planning board.
I'll second that, or I'll make a motion to, some, sorry.
Let's think.
Any discussion?
Certainly, sounds like she's pointing.
Yeah, I think it's a great...
It's a pretty impressive qualification.
I don't know how much, how much Ron had left in this term. I don't know, I was just curious.
Yeah.
But that's...
We can play that now, I get that.
I don't need it.
You know, I think it's great for us to make, to slide into that seat, her knowledge is just second to none right now, her, our folks on the board, what she can bring to that, so I think she's going to be great for us as we develop down the corridor here, and she's, she knows things because it's part of her daily life that everyone aren't aware of, so I think it's going to be great just for that.
We, well, we'll do, we've got a motion, second, right? Any other discussion? If not, all in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Meredith is appointed unanimously. So that brings us to another vacancy we have, and this one's on the town board, and...
When you can just appoint Meredith, appoint her as chair, or just to fill a seat?
No, just as to fill a seat. We will be doing another appointment. Are you okay with it?
Yes, I just wanted to make sure that... Yes, I just wanted to make sure that that, so that for Leanne, it was just.
All right, actually, when we wrap that up. So with Ron's departure, we do not have a chairman of the planning board. And I have had conversations with Pete Jensen, who was a former chair of the planning board. I think he's been there for at least as long as Ron was there, both as a board member and during a period of that time as chair of another board. I reached out to him knowing that, and we've got some important projects coming up Monday, the planning board meeting is Monday. And asked Peter if he would be willing to serve as chair for the remainder of the year. And he said he would very much like to do that. So if the board's okay with that, we'll have to do a resolution, appoint him as chair of the planning.
I have a standard question based on something I said. Does the chair get appointed on a yearly basis?
Yes, as a organization.
Okay.
So it'll be through.
Great, great question.
He's willing and excited to, is even better. It puts a certain responsibility on the chair and the board. So I think he's got the experience, be good for us.
And he's a licensed architect. Helpful with, you know, some of the issues they have to deal with. And. So we'll have to, we'll have to make a offer of resolution to making that. So. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, so we took care of the planning board. All right, so as I started to touch on, we have a vacancy now on the town board. And so with a five-member board, that leaves us with the potential for an inability to make decisions on every issue that comes before us, such as this third vote.
And.
Or four-member board, yeah. You have the potential for two, two, which I think there's a level of expectation from our residents that, you know, we're able to always come to a decision, a practice decision on key issues. We will have a lot of issues coming up over the next several months that, very important issues. They impact many different aspects of our residents' lives. And so I don't know what the board wants to do with that. I'm open to suggestions.
So do we, so we, just like we got a planning board, we just appoint somebody?
Yes.
So that was somebody who was an alternate, kind of already in the pipeline. Can we appoint somebody to a ward seat, just like we just did with the planning boards?
So I believe state law provides for town boards to have the legal authority to vote to fill vacancies on town board?
That's true. You can, by majority vote, it's your children, by majority vote, you would have the right to appoint anybody who was in town or who will repeat these requirements to fill Gina's seat.
Okay.
And you would fill it, and you'll compete. The way you would fill it is, what day is it?
October eleventh.
Okay, so the way you would fill it is you would go through, you'd have an election next November to fill it. So whoever would have would have the rest of this plus all of next year. An election for that seat would be next November, because of the timing. We are no longer.
Yeah, so that's one thing.
So now the November twenty twenty election.
It's delayed.
So, okay.
Well, my question to that is, there's two numbers.
Yeah.
Would our term expire that next?
Yeah.
But does that make that seat for four years or for two years?
It's made.
It would be the filled out expired.
So then we're always going to be a three.
Yeah, that's a very good question, but I have to look and see.
Seven, eight, two, two, two.
It would be, in the general election, it would be a special election for that seat. So it'll only be one more year on that seat.
It's pretty expiring.
It would be one more year to fill out this expiration.
Yeah, it'd be the expired term.
So it looks like a funky amount of that, right?
No, that seat would be a one-year seat.
Okay.
And yours would be the four years.
And that would go back to people in the number of every two years. Because the election would be for the unexpired term that was vacant, right?
Right, and she's a four-year term.
So she just got elected, she served half, half the first year of the term.
Okay.
So the way the election law is written is that the election would be held not this fall, the following fall. And that election would be to fill the unexpired term, which is only two years.
It would be one year, because it would be this year and next year. It would be two winters, right? It would be this year and next year.
So the election would result in another two years.
Right.
Okay, right.
You couldn't have some of the TV tonight and you're fine.
All right, well, that answered my question. And we prepared number four.
Do you have any suggestions?
Please, we have Mr. something. The only person I can actually think of at the moment now who was on the board, as you know, for quite some time, didn't make it to a selection cycle, but I know he's still involved on the planning board. So I know he's still involved. I know he's helped us with tech stuff, you know, at the end of that before. So I know he's still involved heavily. So I don't know, I mean, what his thoughts would be.
Well, I had talked to him about it a couple of years after he was defeated. He very much wanted to be, in the general election, very much wanted to continue to be involved in town government. And that's how, you know, his interest in the planning board was something I very much wanted to do. So he's already serving our community as a planning board member. When I, when I learned that Gina was beginning to shed some issues going on, I learned within the past, you know, several days that she was going to make a decision, possibly make a decision. And I actually reached out to Alan to see if it was something that, you know, does he really, does he want to get back into the town board role? Because it would mean that you'd have to resign from the planning board, because you can't serve two roles at the same time, obviously. We don't want to run afoul of state law. And he's very much, pretty interested. I didn't know that, you know, that there would be such a quick decision for the agency. But I know that he's interested in that.
Okay, so how do we get around that?
Well, so we, the town board has the authority under state law to make an appointment.
Yeah. Pending his resignation.
So if you, if you wanted to appoint him, it would have to be, the resolution would have to read, in his particular instance, he would be appointed to the town board to fill the term as prescribed by state law.
Right, it would be, right.
And subject to resignation from the planning board and filing his oath of office.
Right, what he needs to do, what he would want to do.
So if he did a resolution, it would have to include all that. So we, as municipalities, we're going to file that individual on two boards. Because we've been mildly interested. I would.
Do you all have a question, Ron?
I would, I would say.
Yes, yeah.
Well, I've been thinking, I've been thinking also, I haven't, you know, I haven't been thinking about who had a conversation with less, you know, months or years of, you know, either they were in the shadow of what's going on on the board. And I say, well, I know we're just joining the board. Not really people that stepped up to say, yeah, I really want to be a part of that, you know. So I'm just trying to think, you know, all around, you know, he's really been wondering how that, I don't know, I'm trying to think of this. So still he's interested in being part of representing Sam.
Well, it's kind of a unique situation because, you know, if, if we, if we wind up opening up to other members of the public, they've never been elected before to have a servant in this capacity. In the particular case of Alan, you know, he served one term, four years, wanted to serve a second term. He received eighty-five percent of the vote that Gina received. So there is in our community a distinct interest in having him in going. And from a personal note, and I says this when it was his last board meeting, you know, elections had already come and gone in November. Alan was in his last week and served him on the town board. And then we had a spyware issue, a ransomware issue here at town hall. And Christmas morning, he came and worked nonstop until we were able to ensure recovery of all the town files. You know, that's a measure of character. I mean, if somebody loses an election, you can feel a little, you know, they, they.
Somebody, somebody could easily close the door back, like.
He, yeah.
And he continues.
So I think, you know, that is something that shows his commitment to town, our community. He was very instrumental in working on Sauer. He and Gina both worked, you know, alongside us to make sure we were successful in, you know, getting that Sauer district created. You know, he's very involved at the rec. I think he served on the rec committee at least a couple of years.
Yes.
And so, so we have somebody that has an interest, did a great job while they were here, would like to continue to serve the town in some capacity, greater capacity than he currently is. You know, I, I think he would be somebody that we should seriously consider.
I don't know if anybody feels. He's got, he's got some experience here at the worst stuff, you know. It's not a whole lot of people step up, block their block, you know, put issues, so. I think he'd be, I think he'd be a better.
Would you like to move forward tonight, Alan? I'm comfortable moving forward.
Second.
I'm good. Okay, so with that.
We'll need a resolution.
We would need a resolution that, that appoints Alan Van Tassel to the position of town board as a result of the vacancy created by the resignation of council member LeClaire, subject to resignation from the planning board and filing of his oath of office. Is that where it comes?
How effective?
Effective upon resignation from the planning board and filing of his oath of office. Sorry.
Okay.
So, second. Any discussion?
I don't know if he's actually still interested. Oh, no, because at his last meeting, I mean, I mean, I commented about how I learned a lot from him in a short period of time. And I, and he said, you know, he's got a wealth of knowledge that he can bring to our board. And I'm happy to have him back on the board because he brings a lot.
And, you know, there's the mechanism in place that is helpful. I think we've got all our bases covered. The town of Moro will have the ability to have a fully complemented board as we take on some of the issues coming up here in the fall. And, you know, we continue to move our community forward. So any other discussion?
We just didn't vote.
Do you have a resolution? All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. So we now have a five-member board again. So that's.
That's all the planning board.
And so, so that, so, so, so we have Stuart as the board of the planning board.
Right. We have, we have an alternative there. We can add that.
Yeah, and so we have another alternate already in Purdue. So she can slide up in the absence of a member, right?
Yes.
To, okay. But we, do we have an advertisement still on our website for additional alternates? So we'll give, all right, so we, we should probably, you know, update.
Do you mean, are they on the board?
Yes, Stuart is on the agenda. And I can tell you that our community very much wants to see that project approved and move, move forward. So they're, they're on the agenda for, for Monday. So we will update our website, let everyone know we're looking for alternates to the planning board because of the vacancies shuffling around of some, some members. Anything else, appointments at this time? I think.
For tonight, that's it.
Unless somebody else surprises me. All right, so thank you for that. I just have a few supervisor items. First one is, I'm sure everybody's seen that the OT continues to work at the intersection of one ninety-seven and thirty-two, doing ditching and replacing coves down there. They still have more work to do. I know on some of the days when the weather hasn't been ideal, they had to shut down. But the good news is they're continuing to work. You know, hopefully that helps residents in that particular area with surface water. And we will see. We did have, let's call it transit, did the, the counts, they put out the counters on Old West Road and Washburn Road. I don't have the results from that yet, but I might let you know that they were there. They, they completed those counts and I'll be reaching out later in the week, trying to find out, and I'll get some information back, what that information means. And maybe we'll be able to make some changes there if we can. I got a call from Jesse today, and the building's working on their tower, repainting it, which requires them to take power offline. However, they currently have the ability to pump about seven hundred, eight thousand gallons a day, which just about meets the requirement. They did ask if, you know, the town would, would be okay with, you know, allowing our valves to open up if the pressure would drop down because of demands for fire flow, something that near state D O H wanted the village to do. I said it wouldn't be a problem, we have our IMA agreement in place anyway. And so Jesse has turned the, will turn the valves on when he receives notice that the pressure in the village has dropped below a certain threshold so that they're adequately protected. We are also doing, we're about to begin work on the Nolan Road, our district two tower. If you recall, they're updating the antennas, sub-10 antennas on that tower to do five G internet service. to do 5G internet service. They already have secured a building permit. They got an extended, extension on that building permit as recently as February of this year. Town engineer has reviewed the other time crane coming in, so there was some concern about translucent pipe in there. So the engineers have an approved plan that we have to follow so that we don't have any damages there to our water system. I met with our insurance people last, end of last week, Jaeger Flynn. Actually have a little bit of good news from a health insurance premium standpoint. Going with the same two plans that we offer, we're looking at an approximate, well, actually an exact increase, a slight increase on the HDA, HMO, which is the CDP HP renewal as it currently is of 2.5%. And then on the, that's for, I guess that's total coverage. And the reason that it's so low is that ironically because people aren't working. There aren't as many claims in, people are at home, they're healthier, they're not going. So we benefit. But they did indicate that next year is going to be a struggle, next year meeting after 2021. There's an expectation that we're going to see some pretty significant rate increases. So we don't have to take this up until, until October. I don't know if the insurance committee wants to meet with them independently. If you recall, they come in before we adopted, go over with our non-union employees, the plans and what it means, and then they go, they have a meeting with all of our unionized employees, just so everybody's informed and on the same page. So it's good news from a budgeting standpoint. It's pretty cut and dry.
At this point, we're not changing the plans.
No. Yeah, the increase is for the, the more expensive plan, I think the increase was four percent, 4.2?
I don't recall.
Yeah. 4.87. This is for the MVP, MVP EPO silver plan. And if you recall, this is something that an employee has the option to go into, it's more expensive and pay more money, have greater coverage. So it's not like they have to pay. They have the choice of going into the cheaper one. So that one has a 4.87% increase. And the one for most of our employees is a 2.5% increase. And did the board members get these in their boxes?
I don't believe so.
Okay, so we can get into, I have a folder on it for each board member to review. Just a heads up, something that we will have to vote on.
End of October.
So. I have correspondence from Service of Economic Property Tax Services from their real property information specialist, Christine Aldrich. And she gave a, and I can give the board member one, so basically a thumbnail sketch of the process for processing tax bills. But the important thing that was included in that, and this will impact set budgetized, as you recall, we send some of our sales tax revenue back to the county. And we will have to decide on that by November 4th. So we have some time on that, but as we go through the budget process, because we have such a change in sales tax, we're going to have to look at this carefully and see if we want to continue that practice. We're the only town in Service of Economic Property. And this may be basically a relief mechanism for us to help us at budget time. So we'll have to, that's just for food for thought when that comes up. That's all I have on the supervisor items. Committee reports.
We touched on the New West Road. Then we talked about that, I need to know that as well. Also checking on Palm Hill, because if we're using that.
Oh.
If you're willing to do that, I don't think.
Yeah, I didn't get confirmation.
Because I saw, I saw the counters out there a few weeks ago.
Oh, I understand.
Not on, over. So I took a ride with Palm Hill.
Palm Hill Ridge Road, right? Yeah.
It's Palm Hill, that turns into Palm Hill.
Oh, okay. You know, I'll follow.
Yeah, there's two other things I want to touch on. How are we going to go with enforcement? I was in that office this morning, you need some help. There's, there's questions like this, the code enforcement was like that. Do we get any?
So we, we just extended the advertising for through, what, four more weeks in the protocol? I haven't, I don't think I've received any implications on my office.
You think somebody, somebody tired?
Well, it's a, it's a challenging position.
You're bad, we talked about that this morning, you went up.
So it's been a hard process.
Yeah, and that's why Peter. That's why he was very, because he didn't know.
No, he did a good job.
That's why you do. The other thing I still was, I don't know, where do we go with this all alone?
So.
Kind of frustrating a little bit.
Yeah, so I talked to council about that a little bit earlier. We actually had some ideas to keep the process moving. Actually ran it by one of the landlords, one of the proposed projects, to see if it was something that they may be interested in. And if you recall in the draft, that board members have seen in the other zones in the town, we had percentages where we would allow them, but it couldn't be more of this certain percentage. So, you know, I tossed it out there and I asked them to talk with his company representatives, see if that's something that would be available, and he said, I'd get back to me. We really, we have to have, to keep the process moving forward, we have to have a consensus, at least by majority of the board. And kind of.
Same, I understand that. And maybe we have to, and here in Black Medical, you know, and mark our differences up. And if there's questions that we have that we can't answer as far as the effect of that on the soil, deconditionings, anything like that, we can bring in some experts to, to help us out with that. Right now we're slowing, I know we're slowing. It, it, it is frustrating because when I signed off on this, we said we're going to do another six months, and we're definitely going to have something done with it. But we're going to have six months, and we're not any closer than we were, you know, back in January. So it's kind of frustrating.
I don't know, but that's true.
Well, we had one draft, we've had one draft.
Hold on. We, we had that one draft after working quite good with NACERDA and working with, you know, like fifteen other towns and their laws and putting it together. And working with the body ordinance that's put out by NACERDA and going to, I personally went to a couple of different seminars about this. So the draft you folks got in June was fairly, it was ten, twelve pages, it was fairly extensive. And we talked about it, I believe, for about an hour and a half, just the board comments that before. We followed up and, you know, with you, a number of emails indicating, okay, you folks are split down the middle. You, you told me to go back and, you know, put in what we said, but you can't because part of you said we want X, the other part you said we want Y. Well, obviously I can't put X and Y in because they cross each other out. So my email to you last week, I think it was maybe, was to the effect that, you know, I, we can move forward, but I, you haven't told me what we want in there. So I think the, in, before it goes to the, the public, the language goes to the public, this board has to, and it doesn't have to agree a hundred percent. I mean, that's not, you know, like a consensus like, okay, we can't agree on this, but we're comfortable enough with this is the language, let's see what the public says. So I guess I'm going to need from you folks what language you want in there, because at this point I can't remember anything else in there because you guys are, and I don't mean guys, but apparently guys are, are split down the middle. So I guess just to that point, I, I think what we need to do perhaps is have the things walk the long room. But look at it, and I sent you folks an email saying, so what your differences are. I follow up again, send it again tomorrow and say, what do you want me to do? And then you folks just have to do it.
So what, maybe this will keep the process moving. So I'll, I'll reach out, work, we'll take each section. And we'll have two columns that board members will provide in. What you like, what you don't like, what you might like. And we'll go, we'll go through each section, everybody's submitted to council. You look at it and where we have commonality, maybe make those changes. Or where we have a majority of the board on the same page, make those changes to it. And then so we can get to a full, a form where we can present it to the public. And then we'll let the public weigh in in a workshop possibly. Obviously they'll build a way in, but here in rec, you know.
But I think we have to get to that point, we have to get to the point, to your point, is make your job easier. We're not making your job easier, I'll tell you that.
I'm just.
I think we have to get to the point where we have to re-disagree where our differences are. We can get something to add to you to be able to tell you. But we got to get to that, whether it's, is it a workshop that we have to have?
I think we have to get the doc and, because we, we've already had only discussion that we had.
Well, even before you looked at the, the language, there, it was talked about at almost every meeting before COVID for probably six months, at least in the.
I don't think we ever talked.
I'm trying to help us with COVID.
Well, it's going slowly down, basically.
And, and now, you know, we have all Gina's comments, which are, are, you know, I'll fill it for her again, but now you've got Alan who hasn't. So he, I presume the board would want him to look at it and provide his comments as well. So that's just an act of the layman.
It's like you say, something start, the wheel start to move a little bit, do whatever you need to do to get the wheels moving.
If they're, they're slow, they, they.
I know what you're meant to, you know, we don't see what you do about your management. I know that you're, you're talking about this, you're doing your job a lot, trying to point this right here.
No, no, I totally agree.
Whatever we have to do, we have to include, including you, to get this thing going, you know. I think it's a disservice to our private owners not to, to get this thing going. I think this is one of the, it's not a lot of communities, because, you know, we're giving this hand down a lot of trouble. So that's, that's.
Remember, just to be clear, we have not been kicking it down.
What are you doing? It's funny here, it's funny here, you had six months and another six months.
That, that's.
I know it's small, but I know, I realize, and that's why I'm, I'm trying to see things out.
That is a lot.
You can hear us see that government.
Whatever we can do, you know, eat personal, rest your board, like, I'd say it's going to go on. And if we're going to just gather, try to come up with something, we need a consensus so that you can do your, your mind's game. Yeah.
Okay.
I get it, I just, I think, so we had, we had a bridge in schedule, we had a bulk turn to NACERDA. I made out. Do they have any, like, power points or anything like that, that they might supply? Or are they in a position where they could actually do a presentation here, so that it's soon?
I think we already got that, then we have a packet from this.
There, there is a packet.
There's a packet, but they were, I thought they were going to come in and actually do a public.
I think they were going to talk to you.
They were going to talk to you about what this state provides for, but we already know. I mean, we.
They have it back.
Yeah, I mean, we already know what's out there. That's, that's how we came to construct what the board had before. We just picked up the blue that we were working, we weren't really thinking wheel. We were going with what some other communities did, but, you know, we collectively liked it, didn't we? That's how we got, so we started. But, yeah, we can, I don't know, what do you think that methodology is?
That, I'm happy to do it for you folks, like they do. So I think what I'll do is I will break it up into the different sections and email to everyone, including Alan, to give you email that has changed. And just, you know, i- if I could have you folks then respond to me in a timely manner, like within a separate number of days, then we can move this, we can move this along.
I'll do my time.
You know me, I'll be honest.
All right, so last item on the agenda, unfortunately, we need an executive session to discuss the, the unnamed Tom Row employee in relation to their job. That work?
How about their employment history?
Even better. Strike job, say employment. Would somebody like to make the motion to go into executive session?
Second.
And all in favor?
I, yes.
Should be very brief. But I need, the boards are already aware, but we need to get it on date with council. All right, things that off.
So does that turn that on?
Do we have?
That's it. That's it, I'll be very glad to talk to you.